Historically provides in-kind facility use to host this event. The agreement provides for a 15-day period in July. And the Community Free Clinic would be responsible for all setup and removal of event facilities, including site stabilization. They would not be permitted to construct any permanent facilities. There are requirements for insurance and compliance with all applicable laws, rules, and regulations. It does afford the opportunity for an annual renewal, and the Free Clinic does understand that we do have long-term plans, although they may not be known at this time, for the property, and just defines the county's right to terminate the agreement. Are there any questions?
They'll return the property to the community.
Correct. This is something that's been longstanding that we've done at the airport. We're just simply looking at a new location.
Commissioners, any comments, questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
A motion to approve.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next up, the bid award for the pole barn at the Ag Center. Please come forward, introduce yourselves, everyone. Thank you very much.
Good morning. Brandy Kentner, Director of Purchasing.
Andrew Ashelman, Director of Public Works.
Tom Gazore, Facility Administrator, Washington County Agriculture Center.
Jay Miller, not president, just a board member for Ag Center, Education Center.
The recommendation I have for you this morning is the bid award, PUR 1749, move to award the procurement of a pole barn building, design and construction to the responsive responsible bidder, Reese's Home Improvement of Boonsboro, Maryland, per total sum bid of $87,200. The Washington County Agriculture Education Center solicited design build bids for a pole barn building at the Washington County Agricultural Center. The invitation to bid was advertised on the state of Maryland's eMaryland Marketplace Advantage website, the county's website, the local newspaper, and the new electronic bidding site, Ion Wave. Fifty companies downloaded the document, and on June 4th, the county accepted eight bids. The project is funded by the Washington County Agriculture Education Center Corporation, Ag Center Board via donation received from Edna Fulton.
Commissioners, comments, questions?
So this is just for the design?
No, this would be for the design and construction phase of the project.
Any more questions? Hearing none. I'd entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Second.
I have first and a second. Any further comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you all very much. Mr. Miller, thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Tom, thank you. Next up, quotation award, election management solution and services for the Washington County Board of Education. Brandy, please begin. Introduce the subject.
Brandy Kentner, Director of Purchasing.
Morning. Corey Green, Election Program Supervisor, stepping in on behalf of Barry Jackson.
The next recommendation I have for you is the quotation award, Q-25-800, move to award the quotation for election management solution and services to the responsible responsible bidder, SOC Incorporated out of Richmond, Virginia, who submitted a responsive total lump sum bid of $70,177.87. An election management system is required to replace an outdated election management system and combine multiple tools into one. The system will be a web-based dashboard to help the Board of Elections better manage the election process, to include election workers, polling places, inventory and supply management, and incident response. The request for quotation was advertised on the state of Maryland's eMaryland Marketplace website, the county's website, and the new online bidding site, Ion Wave. Sixteen companies downloaded the document. Five bids were received. The low bid did not meet the specification, so we went to the next low on this particular one. Funds in the amount of $70,177.87 are available in the department's operating budget for these services.
Commissioners, comments, questions? Motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Yeah, go ahead.
I have first and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. Next up, item 15, rejection of request for proposal, event production services. Brandy, please introduce yourself in the matter again.
Brandy Kentner, Director of Purchasing.
Danielle Weaver's on vacation this week, so I can help with any questions, similar to Alan as well.
Okay. The recommendation I have this morning for this one is a rejection for the request of proposal, PUR 1743, event production services, move to take action in the best interest of the county, and request that the proposal for the event production services be rejected to the proposal exceeding the budgets available, and request to re-advertise with a revised document. The RFP was listed on the state of Maryland's eMaryland Marketplace Advantage website, the county's website, the new online bidding site, and the local newspaper. Eighty-nine companies downloaded the document, and we did receive one response, which was overbid. So, over budget. Again, I'm asking for approval to reject and to re-advertise with a revised document.
We'd like to downsize the scope of the actual audiovisual and stage equipment.
Motion to approve.
Second.
First and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next up, Brandy, please introduce yourself in the matter. Welcome back.
Brandy Kentner, Director of Purchasing.
Neil Doran, Airport Director.
The next recommendation is the contract award, PUR 1747, move to award the Northwest Quadrant Utility Expansion at the Hagerstown Regional Airport to the responsive responsible bidder, C. William Hetzer of Hagerstown, Maryland, who submitted the lowest total sum bid of $344,860. This is contingent upon the county attorney's office approving the contract agreement as well. The scope of work includes the extension of the existing water line, as well as the extension of the electrical and telecommunications utilities to a proposed sign at the end of Airport Road, and that sign was approved by the Board on June 3rd, 2025. The project also includes the extension of utilities for future hanger pads. The invitation to bid was advertised in the local newspaper, the state of Maryland's eMaryland Marketplace Advantage website, the county's website, and the new online bidding site. Thirty-two companies downloaded the bid document, and one bid was received, and the bid tabulation is attached for that bid. Funds are budgeted in the department's Airport Systemic Improvement Project. The fund is being, the project is also being funded through a 2023 grant, and later addition grant from the Tri-County Council of Western Maryland Incorporated through the Maryland Department of Commerce.
If approved, it will be contingent upon our county's attorney's office approval. Commissioners, any questions?
Motion to approve, contingent upon the county's attorney's office approval of contract.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. Brandy, welcome back again. Please introduce the subject.
Brandy Kentner, Director of Purchasing.
Joe Moss, Deputy Director of Engineering Services for Water Quality.
The next recommendation I have for you this morning is the sole source award, PUR 1755, motion to authorize a sole source procurement for two Moyo pumps from Geiger Pump and Equipment out of Baltimore, Maryland, per total sum in the amount of $125,349.62, based on a quote dated June 10th, 2025. The Department of Water Quality wishes to apply Section 1 through 106.2A and 2 of the Code of Public Local Laws of Washington County to this procurement request. This section states that a sole source procurement is authorized and permissible when the compatibility of equipment, accessories, or replacement parts is paramount to the consideration. This request does require four out of five commissioners to move forward. Water Quality is requesting a sole source of the purchase of the two pumps for the Conica Jake wastewater treatment plant for the following reasons. The purchasing of the same model of pumps will eliminate inventory of spare parts for the three pumps. They'll just maintain those three with the parts rather than adding a new brand of pump for parts. Operations of personnel at the plant are already fully trained in the operation of the Moyo brand pumps. This will eliminate future training on additional brand pumps. Three, programming of the new pumps through the programmed logic controller will not require additional integration for a new pump. Four, the operating conditions related to the duty point and pumping range will be identical to the third pump already in service, thus not requiring any modification to the set points on the third pump, which is remaining in service. And lastly, maintenance personnel will not need to be trained, retrained for these pumps because they had already trained for the routine maintenance associated to this brand. Funds are budgeted in the Division's capital improvement account for these new pumps.
Commissioners, questions?
Joe, do the existing pumps, will you just run them until they fail and then replace them, or will you go actively?
The general consensus is that 20 years is typically the life expectancy of those pumps. You're kind of rolling the dice if you go beyond that to put yourself in a position. These pumps are a long lead time, so you don't want to get in a position where, you know, you can't pump.
Can you lose one pump and continue functioning?
Yeah, I mean, right now, there's two of the smaller ones. And then the one larger one is newest one. It's online now. And what we're trying to do is get the two smaller ones upgraded to the largest one so that we have three, so we always have one extra, one that's always sitting there.
The other comments? No, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Second.
I have first and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Four as required, four members, correct? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Brandy, introduce the next topic.
Eric's not coming. The next recommendation is intergovernmental cooperative purchase, INTG-250195, move to authorize by resolution for the Department of Emergency Services to purchase one 2024 Ford F-350 Crew Cab from Apple Ford out of Columbia, Maryland, at a price of $83,977. We're also asking for permission to utilize another jurisdictions contract, which was awarded by Baltimore County. The vehicle will replace a 2005 Ford Expedition that was formerly used as a utility vehicle for the emergency support unit. Upon replacement, the 2025 Ford Expedition will be stripped down of all of its emergency lighting and other accessories, and will be sold on Gov. deals. The Code of Public Local Law of Washington County, Maryland, provides that the Board of County Commissioners may procure goods and services through another contract entered into by another entity, as long as we abide by the same terms and conditions of that contract, and we are doing so. By utilizing this contract, the county will benefit with a direct cost savings with the purchase of this vehicle due to the economies of scale that this contract has leveraged. Funding is available in the department's capital improvement account for this purchase.
Motion to approve.
Is there a second? First and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. Brandy, you're up again. Welcome back.
Brandy Kentner, Director of Purchasing.
Greg Cartratt, Director of Permits and Inspections and Code Official.
The next recommendation is an intergovernmental cooperative purchase, INTG-25-0193, move to authorize by resolution for the Department of Permits and Inspections to purchase three 2026 Chevy Equinox vehicles from Heritage Fleet out of Milford, Delaware, at a price of $29,172 each, totaling $87,516. We're also asking for permission to use another jurisdictions contract, which was awarded by Howard County. These vehicles will replace the following vehicles: one 2006 Jeep Liberty with 158,634 miles, one 2015 Jeep Patriot with 175,410 miles, and one 2015 Jeep Patriot with 172,258 miles. The Code of Public Local Laws of Washington County provides that the Board of County Commissioners may procure goods and services through a contract entered into by another government entity, as long as we abide by the same terms and conditions, and we are doing so. There is a direct cost savings due to the economies of scale the contract has leveraged. Funding is available in the department's capital improvement budget for this purchase.
Any comments, questions? Motion to approve.
Second.
Is there a motion to approve? Go first. Okay, Derek.
Brandy, second.
Yep. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And I believe, Brandy, you're here one more time.
Thank you for today. I appreciate all the.
You're welcome.
Brandy Kentner, Director of Purchasing.
Tracy McCammon, Risk Management Coordinator.
The final recommendation this morning is the contract award, PUR 1726, Insurance Brokerage and Risk Management Services, move to award the contract for the Insurance Brokerage and Risk Management Services to the responsible responsive proposal, C-Biz Incorporated out of Cumberland, Maryland, per total proposal cost of $96,000 per year, totaling $480,000 for a five-year period, the term of this contract. Proposal seeking a team of industry professionals to assist and guide the county in identifying and management the unique public sector risk and exposures encountered in its daily operation. The county accepted proposals from firms interested in providing the county with a design of its risk financing program, including brokerage services to include but not limit to its property and casualty risk financing program for the county, which would contemplate use of cost-effective self-insured retentions, insurance deductibles, and other risk financing techniques. Services will also extend to preparation of insurance specifications for the insurance market, marketing and solicitation of insurance quotation, placement of insurance policies, any requests made by the county, and other brokerage services as enumerated in the scope of services contained in the RFP, including efforts necessary to ensure those volunteer, fire, and rescue companies who are members of the Washington County Volunteer Fire Rescue Association. The term of this contract is for a period of one year, potentially beginning July 1st, 2025, with the option for the county to renew up to four consecutive one-year periods. The coordinating committee reviewed the proposals. The coordinating consists of, and there is a correction here, I'd like to remove the county administrator from the listing here. The coordinating committee consisted of the Risk Management Administrator, Safety Compliance Coordinator, the Director of Human Resources, the Deputy Director of Human Resources, and the Director of Purchasing. The request for proposal was advertised on eMaryland Marketplace Advantage website, the county's website, the new online bidding site, Ion Wave, and a local newspaper. Twenty-eight companies downloaded the document, and three firms did submit proposals. Two firms were deemed non-responsive by the coordinating committee, and the pricing proposal for one company was opened. Funding is available in individual departments for each line item of coverage.
Is the actual cost?
Go ahead, questions, comments.
Is the actual cost less than previously? Didn't it go down? No? Did it go down?
It did not go down.
It did not? Okay.
Now, the last contract was for a period of five years, so that was a long span to not have an increase.
Oh, different time spans. Okay, good.
Motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a first and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you again.
Tracy, I believe you're up next.
Yes.
Please introduce yourself in the matter.
Tracy McCammon, Risk Management Coordinator.
Patrick Buck with C-Biz Insurance Services. And we're here to present the 2025-2026 Property and Casualty Insurance Renewal. The recommended motion is move to renew the property and liability policies with Travelers Insurance Company and the airport liability with AIG. Also approve the attached budget adjustment to cover the additional premium for the cyber liability policy. The renewal quotes for the insurance carriers are reflected in the attached premium comparison, and the total renewal is a 14.7% increase in premiums compared to last year's actuals that were paid. As you can see from the attached premium comparison, our biggest increases are in the cyber liability and the drone liability coverage lines. We recently added seven new drones to the policy that were not budgeted earlier in the year. Also, Travelers has agreed to remove the sublimit on the ransomware. I'm trying to get us back to where we were in 2022. So the first step of that was to remove the ransomware. They told me last year that if we went through another year of no claims, they would consider removing that. So I brought that up this year. They said they would do that, but unfortunately, it would cost an additional $30,000. So I spoke with Michelle and with Kelsey, and that's the purpose for the budget adjustment. There is money in the budget, but it had to be moved. So the sublimit will be removed, and the limit for the ransomware will now be $1 million, the same as the policy limit.
And the budget adjustment is funding that $30,000 with reductions to General Ops for Time to Care Act. The Time to Care Act mandate for family has, family coverage has been deferred until fiscal year '27, so we budgeted forward in fiscal year '26. So we do have savings there that we can fund this overage with for our cyber coverage.
Motion to approve.
Is there a second? A second. First and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next up, item 22, Greg Cartratt. Please introduce yourself in the matter.
Greg Cartratt, Director of Permits and Inspections, Code Official. Here today to approve a resolution to adopt the civil citation of Washington County Fire Prevention Code, subject to fines listed in the previously adopted Fire Code fee schedule. Similar to the adoption of such resolution of the county's building code, the county must adopt a resolution that outlines which sections of the Washington County Fire Prevention Code create a civil offense punishable by a fine outlined in the Fire Code fee schedule. Washington County held a public hearing and adopted the local Fire Prevention Code and its accompanying Fire Code fee schedule on April 29th of this year. The fee schedule allows for fines as a result of civil citations. This resolution outlines the provisions of the Fire Prevention Code, which is considered civil citations and punishable by the relevant fee in the adopted fee schedule, and that resolution is attached.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
First and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, sir. Next up, Greg, welcome back. Please introduce the subject.
Yes, sir. Greg Cartratt, Director of Permits and Inspections and Code Official.
Rosalinda Pasqual, Deputy County Attorney.
Move for approval to accept the MOU between the Office of State Fire Marshal and Washington County. The Office of State Fire Marshal has presented an MOU detailing the responsibilities of the Office of State Fire Marshal will continue to have in Washington County, and the responsibilities of Washington County Division of Permits and Inspections will assume in enforcing fire prevention and adopted Fire Code. By the Division of Permits and Inspections moving to take over the fire plan review and fire inspections, there are several, certain areas the Office of State Fire Marshal will continue to operate in Washington County. The Office of State Fire Marshal will continue to provide fire investigation, bomb, explosive permitting, and inspection of fireworks, plan review, and inspections of state-owned buildings, healthcare, and schools. And I do have for you commissioners, we just received yesterday, may I approach? We just received the actual paid MOU.
Thank you.
Thank you, Greg.
So the MOU that was attached to this agenda item was the draft with our revisions. We had not yet been notified that the state approved our revisions until yesterday. That is what Greg has just provided to you.
So the draft in this matches up?
Yes.
Commissioners, any comments, questions? Greg, anything else? I'm looking for a motion to approve. It's your convenience.
Motion to approve.
Second.
First and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. Thank you, Greg. Moving on, item 24, appointment of Washington County Administrative Charging Committee. I believe, attorney has that.
It's Rosalinda Pasqual, Deputy County Attorney. I am here today to request the approval of the appointment of Doug Mullen dor to fill the vacancy on the Washington County Administrative Charging Committee due to Charlie Summers' resignation. This current three-year term ends August 31st, 2026. This is a paid board. The Washington County Administrative Charging Committee is, in accordance with the provisions of ORD 202210, known as the Washington County Maryland Police Accountability Ordinance, has two members who are appointed by the B.O.C.C. This is a five-member board that reviews investigatory files of police misconduct complaints against police officers in our county. They make determinations based upon review of said files of whether to administratively charge involved police officers.
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. Attorney, you're up next again. Thank you.
Rosalinda Pasqual, Deputy County Attorney. This is regarding a reappointment and the appointment of a chair for Washington County Police Accountability Board. The motion being sought is to approve, to reappoint Steve McCarty to serve his second full three-year term with the Police Accountability Board from July 1st, 2025 through June 30th, 2028, and to appoint a current member, Amber Hill Smart, as the new chair of the PAB for the remainder of her term, which ends August 31st, 2026. This is not a paid board. The PAB is a seven-member board that meets quarterly and makes policy recommendations to law enforcement agencies and other responsibilities as laid out by ORD 202210, also known as the Washington County Police Accountability Ordinance. The PAB is required to exist per the Maryland Police Accountability Act of 2021. Per the ordinance, the B.O.C.C. appoints the chair of the PAB.
Motion to approve.
First and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. Next up, number 26, approval of siting study in CVS. Gentlemen, please introduce yourself in the matter.
Neil Doran, Airport Director. Andrew Ashelman, Director of Public Works. Wanted to bring before you this engineering task order. This is requesting approval for the Board of County Commissioners, President or Vice President, as appropriate, to execute documents related to a siting study and also a concept validation document.
He just walked in.
With our engineering firm, ADCI, and to authorize me as Airport Director to apply for and accept related grant offer from the Maryland Aviation Administration. This project will involve updating our siting study. We previously had one completed in 2016, and now we're being told by the Federal Aviation Administration that that document can no longer be used and needs to be updated. This project will include virtual modeling, so as to determine the appropriate sightlines from the preferred site on airport property, and this will also approximate a 30% design level. It will provide plans, cost criteria, and help us be ready should follow-on grant funding be available from the state of Maryland. We've been told this is a compressed timeline, but if we can get these processes done over the next few months, there's a possibility of funding that could come later on in this calendar year, 2025. So this project will be funded at the level of 71.15% from the Maryland Aviation Administration as a special grant. That would be a not-to-exceed amount of $201,845, and the county contribution would be up to not-to-exceed $81,858, for a total up to not-to-exceed $283,703. So we've also put before you a budget adjustment. We've identified four existing airport capital improvement project accounts that we could use. use to come up with the $81,858 needed. That would be the EQP-041 account in the amount of $5,000, the COM-026 account in the amount of $59,930, the BLD-117 account in the amount of $10,932, and the BLD-088 account in the amount of $5,996. And that would help us to have the funds necessary to move forward with this project.
And I'd like to point out that the numbers Neil referenced are different than what's on the ARF. This was really a last-minute effort, getting information back from the state prior to the end of their fiscal year and information from the consultant, and so their funding essentially with any remaining funds that they have at the end of their fiscal year, and so that was the end number, the not-to-exceed, and so did want to recognize that those numbers are a little bit different than on the ARF from what was submitted by that deadline.
Motion to approve, anyone?
Second.
First and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much. Next up, Safer Grant Application, Director Hayes, please come forward, introduce the matter.
Honored Commissioners, David Hayes, Director of Emergency Services. We're here seeking permission from the Board of County Commissioners to apply and have subsequently awarded to accept funding for the 2025 Safer Grant Application. The application period opened around May 2030, closes on July 3rd. We're looking for a motion to authorize the Division Emergency Services to submit a FEMA Safer Grant application to hire 18 firefighters and accept the grant funding if awarded. The Division has placed additional full-time firefighters in multiple fire stations throughout Washington County over the last four years. While the addition of the firefighters has increased the number of trained and certified providers on duty each day, there are still instances when apparatus and/or departments struggle to get adequate firefighters on apparatus for call responses. Authorizing the Division to hire 18 additional firefighters, it will enable D.E.S. to continue to strategically place firefighters in various fire stations throughout Washington County. Response statistics are being prepared for the B.O.C.C. that will help determine the recommended placement of the additional firefighters if awarded. The fiscal year impacts over the three-year course of the grant, if awarded, would be year one to the county would be $760,582.90, with an actual hire date of 10/1, which we could not hire before that because of the timing of the Safer Grant. That impact would look more like $570,000 plus to hire those 18 firefighters. Year two would again, and this is a mistake in the ARF, would be a repeat of the $760,582.90, and we'd have that full cost because we would have the firefighters for the full year. And then the third year transitions to $1.4 million to the county when the cost share transitions from a 75% federal, 25% county, to a 65% county, 35% federal cost share. And then the cost of the fourth year, which is your full cost without any federal assistance, will be about $2.2 million. We have concurrences, of course, by myself, County Administrator Gordon, Kelsey Mace, Chief Financial Officer. And a little bit of history, our goal as we continue to move through this, the Division staffs 26 staff on duty each day. That consists of five officers, 11 firefighter apparatus operators, and 10 EMT class paramedics. So that's all in for the Division that's firing EMS. We currently have seven letters from fire departments that are currently staffed with our part-time folks that are asking for full-time staff because those hours are not sufficient. And then we have two letters from fire departments that currently do have full-time firefighters assigned, asking for additional staff. That's a total of nine letters, just to give you some history and background on that. And I'm open for questions.
I just wanted to add a little point of clarification. The fiscal year '26 budget does include funding for nine additional firefighters. He is asking for 18 to be funded through the grant. If the grant is not approved, the Board of County Commissioners will still fund nine of those firefighters, not the full 18. I just wanted to clarify that point.
David, back up to the first sentence, when does it open and when does it close?
So it opened, the grant period opened about May 23rd, it closes July 3rd next week.
Do we have the grant written?
I do, I have the grant all but done, waiting on today. Have a little bit of the narrative to clean up, but we'll be prepared to submit by July 3rd.
And just a curious question, what would nine, we're in the budget for nine, that would, in your opinion, that doesn't fulfill your need?
No. So if we're looking, so the grant has to be based on something that drives us towards NFPA 1721, which is the combination volunteer career department staffing algorithm. If the grant narrative doesn't follow that, likely don't have a great chance to have the grant funded. So what does that mean in the world of what we have to implement? We use multiples of 12. Takes 12 people to staff one station with three firefighters around the clock. That's using an algorithm of four people that takes care of your Cali relief, your vacation, your sick times, people that are out just on medicals or whatever that might be. So with the 18, this will allow us to put, to address one of these stations in these seven letters completely, according to the grant, and then we can put the second and third firefighter either to Station 11, which is Potomac Valley, or Station 8, which is Boonsboro Fire. But it has to be a completer. It's not, you can't put a driver only here and a driver only there, it won't fund with that type of narrative. So 12, 24, if you want to address two stations, you got to be at 24. Two new stations, if you want to address one new station, and get those other stations out of driver-only positions, which is not a good place to be. The 18 will allow us to work on that.
Yeah, I know, I know that I've met with a couple chiefs and they've expressed their concerns about personnel. I mean, I got to trust staff, as you and our financial staff, that this is, makes sense to us. So, I mean, any other commissioners got questions, just to clarify?
I don't have any questions. The background that I've gotten over the last year in talking to, you know, the leadership team, you know, Dave and Ollie and others, and talking to some of the firehouses and the problems we've been dealing with.
And I've been hearing the same thing.
And it's not, you know, I know this is fire-related, but, you know, we also have the EMS.
Right.
Issues, and, you know, this is one of the most important things we have responsibility for, the public safety, okay? As Jeff always says, you know, on the most.
On the worst day of your life, you call 911 for this.
So I fully support this, and, you know, let's get on with it.
And I'd have to agree, I mean, I think it's, we spend money on, I mean, I think this is, to me, is just what you just stated, one of the best ways to spend money, because it doesn't get bad till it gets bad, you know, so, yeah. Every day, our first responders are creating miracles, the way they're patching their staffing together. And this is not to replace our volunteers, but it's to augment and to work in partnership to provide a better delivery of service. Would that be accurate?
Absolutely, 100%.
And it's been successful, right? I mean, everybody's, it's been a successful program.
I say this all the time, and I say it to the chiefs and I say it to our staff. You know, the position that I'm in is a privilege because I'm sitting in a position where people want career staffing. There's a lot of jurisdictions where there's a lot of hate and discontent between career and volunteer staff, and we've been able to manage that to some level.
Thank you. We get a motion to approve? Is there a second?
I do have one more question.
Okay, let's get the second and then your question. Okay, first and second, any discussion, sir?
David, Station 11 is just driver only?
Yes.
Around the clock? Okay. And that's our southernmost station, right?
It is, and they handle a large part of our tough waterfalls.
Yeah, okay.
All right, have first and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much. That concludes our open session. Now I will need a motion to go into closed session for the following reasons, and outlined in more detail on the agenda cover sheet. One, to discuss confidential personnel matters. Two, to consult with counsel to obtain legal advice on a legal matter. And three, to consult with staff about potential litigation.
Motion to go in closed session.
Is there a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And Pastor, thank you again for being here today, appreciate your words.
Thank you.